Okay, we're live.
Excellent. Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM. A roll call. All board members are here and all administrators are here. And the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Chavez, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. All rise. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America
and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I have the inspiration tonight as well. And so we've all known the long loneliness, and we've learned that the only solution is love and that love comes with community. Dorothy Day. That quote seemed really fitting because we've been dealing with the pandemic for nearly a year now. And long loneliness just seemed to so aptly describe how many of us are feeling on some days. And yet that quote ends on a note of hope, the answer of community. And community is described rather poetically in an excerpt from Dreaming in the Dark by Skyhawk or Starhawk, excuse me. Community means strength that joins our strength to do the work that needs to be done. Arms to hold us when we falter, a circle of healing, a circle of friends, someplace where we can be free. And so this inspiration is in honor of our school counselors and for Dana, especially tonight, reflecting the theme of their presentation anchored around community. I just want to thank everyone in AUSD for striving in the face of just such profound physical distance and separation to connect, create, and foster our genuine community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chavez. That's wonderful. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to agenda. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Chung and seconded by Mr. Eng. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There was no action taken in closed session today. And we have no audience comments today, so we're going right to the presentation of Ms. Ella Yee, a Girl Scout Gold Award recipient.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ella Yee, and I am a Girl Scout from Troop 3891. And before I start my presentation, I would like to thank Dr. Van Astal and the Board of Education for allowing me to speak tonight about my project. So now I'm going to share my screen of a presentation I created. Sorry, it's taking a while to load. Okay, so to start off, my Gold Award project is called A Healthier You. The purpose of my project is to educate children of the Arcadia community about the importance of health, fitness, and nutrition. From my own experience, especially being a cross-country runner, learning about proper health at an early age can be extremely beneficial for the long term. And because of my own journey in health and fitness, I made it my goal to help guide these adolescents towards a healthier lifestyle and ultimately a healthier you through recipes and fitness activities. So I have been working on my project for the past several months now and wanted to share some of the progress I made to date. So in November and December, I had the opportunity to host virtual workshops for approximately 120 4th grade students from my former elementary school, Holly Avenue. And I was lucky to have Principal Ms. Oakland as my mentor and the guidance of her and the wonderful 4th grade teachers. The workshops were not only fun for me, but were hopefully fun and beneficial for the 4th graders as well. I was also so pleasantly surprised by how engaging the students were, and it was overall such a memorable experience to be able to connect with students at my former school. And also in the upcoming week, I am looking forward to hosting another virtual workshop for a local Girl Scout troop about maintaining a healthy lifestyle. Now here I have included a small glimpse of my website, which I will also be explaining on the next slide. So here you can see a recipe and fitness activity I recently posted on my website, where I post kid-friendly recipes and fitness activities monthly. And below those pictures is a link to my website, ahealthieryouproject-weebly.com, and I hope you all will have some time to check it out later. And this concludes my brief presentation. Thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Question. I didn't get to write down that website fast enough.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, ahealthieryouproject weebly.com. And if anybody else needs it, just let me know.
Perfect. Because I'm interested in going online and seeing the things to do.
Yeah, and I'm continuing to update it every single month, so there should be new posts.
That's great, Ella. Thank you so much for sharing about your project. I think I want to try the pancake recipe that flashed. If you email me the website, I will share it with the other board members, too.
Yes, I will.
Ella, thank you for sharing your work and your project with younger students. You know, we do our best as adults to convey what we know, but we all know that, you know, what do adults know? Students really like to hear from other students and older ones that they can identify with. And so we've seen that with all of our special programs we've had over the years in Arcadia, where older students go down and work with the younger ones. So not only the work that you did on the project, but to me, that, you know, your willingness to share that with the kids from you, I think, is so powerful. So I just appreciate the sharing.
Thank you. I'm glad you liked it.
Thank you ever so much. Any other questions or comments? Excellent. We will move to our student representative report. Mr. Connor Wa. I don't see... There you are.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Connor Wa, and I'm the student board member. And tonight, there will be a report delivered by two members of ASB, Arcadia ASB's Executive Council, on student affairs at HHS.
And I'm working on that video. Hang on just a sec.
It's so nice that we have so many students here tonight.
Yeah, it's a good break from being the only one.
I apologize. All my tabs are named the same thing, so I'm trying to figure out which one I'm supposed to be playing. Hang on just a sec.
In the meantime, I put Ella's website in the chat. If anyone wants to see it, it's awesome. Great job, Ella. That's super exciting.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Hoy, and I'm the junior class president. Tonight, I'll be delivering part of the board report. The club's commissioner has begun planning for virtual spring preview and will start preliminary preparations for the club chartering and approval process for the end of the school year. In conjunction with the ASB historian, the publicity commissioners, and the process of making meet-year ASB graphics for the student body to get to know fun facts and details about their ASB members. Link Crew is currently working on their first event of the second semester that will be taking place on February 12, 2021. This event will be their Fresh and Family Feud, where freshmen will compete in virtual family feud games. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Wu, and I'm the 2021 ASB Activities Commissioner. Tonight, I will be delivering the second half of the student rep report. The academic commissioner hosted a listening session to speak on academic team culture with team captains. Science Olympiad competed in the Rice University Invitational on January 16. Senior council has sent out a Google form to the senior class of 2021 to create a collective playlist for the class consisting of throwback songs. Although the class of 2021 has effectively lost their senior year, senior council hopes to have small things such as this collective playlist of feel-good throwback songs to build camaraderie and unity for the class. Thank you so much, and have an amazing rest of your evening.
Thank you very much. Great. Okay, our first action item is the 2019-2020 audit report. Mr. Eslen, would you like to introduce this?
I would love to. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So with us this evening is Peter Glenn. He is a partner at the firm of Niagara and Niagara, and they are our auditors and have been for a few years. So a little bit of background, every year the district is required to undergo an audit that's performed by a public accountant that's licensed by the state of California, and it's done in accordance with California Education Code. So Peter and his team actually managed to visit our district office and some of our school sites this past year to carry out the audit. I'm sure everything was done very safely. And really, the purpose of the audit is to strengthen the district's fiscal management practices so that we can most effectively use these public funds for the education of our students here in Arcadia. And it's really a learning opportunity for all of us in the district. There's a lot of people, a lot of employees, that go into making this audit successful. And I just want to thank all of them, and especially those from Ed Services and Nutrition Services, Fiscal Services, and Technology as well. Every year, we also do a second audit for our bond fund, our facilities bond fund, and Peter will be speaking on that after this first district audit. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Peter. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, members of the board and cabinet. Thank you very much, Dirk, for the introduction. So as Dirk said, the audit process this year was rather unique. Usually, we are able to get out to the district physically. And I think just about the time we started our audit, which is typically February, March last year, obviously, everything kind of came to a grinding halt. And so much of our audit process was done remotely. And so I'd like to extend our thanks certainly to the district, the various departments, for allowing us to complete our audit procedures in a timely manner. The state actually extended the time that was allowed to, you know, submit the audit report. And so, you know, getting your report here in January is really a testament to how well the district worked with us in making sure all that information was given to us. So we certainly appreciate that. And there were many individuals, and of course Dirk's team, David Vong and Corinne Ruby, we wanted to, you know, express our thanks there. So briefly, you know, as Dirk mentioned, the audit process really, it follows a certain a certain type of program, really. We audit in accordance with generally accepted audit standards, with governmental audit standards. We use the K-12 State Audit Guide that's put out annually. We also consult with the Uniform Guidance, and that was particularly challenging this year as that was not provided in the usual manner. So, and with the new funding from the CARES Act, that made it particularly challenging. So, but all of that was performed. You can rest assured that we performed our due diligence. And we're happy to report that, you know, we issued the report with an unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion. There were, you know, no findings, there were no concerns. And really, our recommendations were minor, and those were in the management comment letter. So that's at the very back of the report. So an audit, you know, it's a snapshot in time. It's also a look back over the activity of the full year, but it provides assurance for future periods from that June 30, 2020 date forward, which I know really is is of much concern to everyone here, including the district. And it provides an independent opinion from the district so that we can provide that level of assurance to stakeholders and board members. So that is a really brief discussion of some of the steps we took in the audit in general. And then if I may just move right into the bond, is that? Okay. If I may move right into the bond audit, in much the same way, the bond audit was a clean opinion, unmodified. As you know, there wasn't a whole lot of activity in the bond this year. Most of the capital improvements actually came out of other funds in 1920. But we know that the district is gearing up to use, in the future, some bond proceeds. We actually have in our subsequent event, which occurred in November of 2020, as you are all very aware, that the district issued Series C of the Geo Bonds for the Measure I. So in our work on Measure I, we didn't find any deficiencies, any exceptions. We tested about 76% of the expenditures over the year that occurred out of Measure I. And we also reviewed a sample of projects to ensure that there were proper bidding. And if there were no new projects bid, then we would have, you know, tested for any change orders to make sure that those were not excessive over the 10%. And in that audit, we used the Appendix A of the K-12 State Audit Guide. And we select a representative sample, and we ensure that all the proceeds are used for construction, renovation, furnishing, equipping of school facilities from authorized bond projects. So all of that was performed, and again, we're happy to report that our opinion was unmodified in that respect. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Do any of the board members or administrators have questions? Go ahead, Rain.
Thank you, Pierre, and thanks, Dirk. This is not specifically to the audit, but kind of highlighted it. So I just wanted to give maybe one or both of your chance to talk a little bit about our pension plans, our unfunded liabilities on page 48. It talks about our district's share of 88 million. Maybe can you just talk a little bit generally about that and what that means financially? And especially as it contains our budget in future years?
I'll talk about it from the perspective of within the district. And then, Peter, if you want to add on at the end, sort of how that's reflected in the audit. Because they're really different perspectives. For us within the district, we think about our budget on a day-to-day, an annual basis, and it's cash that goes out the door. One of the purposes of the audit is to provide financial statements for the investment markets. And so some of that work that we do within the district gets translated at the audit level for that, for those public markets to evaluate our performance. But internally, you know, we have two retirement systems. It's the state teachers' retirement system, STIRS, and then PERS, which is the Public Employee Retirement System, which is for classified employees. And since the recession, about 2013 or so, those two agencies have started increasing the amount, the percentage, that employers, including school districts, have to pay on behalf of their employees into these large pension funds. And so there's three groups that are contributing to these funds. One is the employee themselves. You know, we all see the STIRS and PERS being deducted from our paychecks. Then there's also the employer, which is the school district. And then lastly is the state. And all of us putting money into that pot, it's still not fully funded, and that's where that unfunded liability comes in. But for us as a district, we are making the contributions on an annual basis. Every paycheck that goes out, we're making the appropriate contributions. And over the past six years or so, that has almost more than doubled. The percentages were around 8 and 10%, and they're now close to 16 to 20% for those two different retirement systems. And very roughly, the dollars that we pay have also doubled. So as we've recovered from the Great Recession and as our funding has increased over the years, a lot of that money immediately goes right back into funding our retirement systems, which are a great benefit to all of us as public employees. But there are real dollar costs associated with those pension plans.
Yeah, very well said, Dirk. I think the only thing I would have to add to that is that because you're part of this statewide plan, really what's reflected in your financials is what's called your proportionate share. The district's proportionate share of that liability. So as a district, it's actually kind of hard to say this, but really, there's nothing you can do as a district to improve that number. It's you're part of this large, enormous pool with all of the other school districts. And, you know, as part of that pool, you have your slice or that, you know, of that liability. So as the state goes, so you go, really, with that fund.
One of the things we talk about as part of our budget development are the factors, the issues that go into our budget. And some of them, you know, on a continuum, we have no control over or we have absolute control over. And the STIRS and PERS rates are on the end of the continuum where we have very little control. Now, I did notice that Allison Talbot raised her hand. Was that on purpose? Do you really have a question about the audit, Allison? Or was that just a technical?
That was a mistake.
I think that was just a glitch. So I hope that answers your question, Rain.
Yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, thank you very much, Mr. Glenn, for coming and speaking to us and presenting the audit report. And we thank the entire, not only Niagara and Niagara, but also all the people within the district who do so much work to provide all the information to the auditors. And we're always pleased when we come back with these good audit reports. It's not easy to be done. We know that. So we thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Item C, Resolution Number 1421, National School Counseling Week, February 1 through 5, 2021.
Sorry to interrupt. Do we need to move to accept post audit reports?
Do we, oh, do we need to? Do we need to make that motion?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay.
I just figured we'd accept them, you know.
I'll be the first one, then. Yeah, move to accept the 2019-20 audit report.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Chavez and seconded by Mr. Chung. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for keeping me on track, Ms. Chavez. I know it's not easy to be done.
I know. And then I will move to accept the 2019-20 audit report for Measure I, the general obligation bond.
I'll second.
Okay, that motion was made by Ms. Chavez and seconded by Ms. Yee. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we'll move to Resolution Number 1421, the National School Counseling Week. Dr. Harris, you?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Boy, Ms. Chavez, you really queued this resolution number up well in your inspiration when you talked about the long lonely. And, you know, in any given year, it's a pleasure for the district to be able to recognize the amazing counseling services and the counselors that we have here in Arcadia Unified School District. But if ever there were a year to recognize and celebrate them, it would definitely be this year with, given the pandemic and the amount of mental health issues that we're dealing with as a district. So with that, it brings me great pleasure to present to you tonight Resolution Number 1421, National School Counseling Week, February 1 through 5, 2021.
Okay, could I have a motion to accept, to approve the resolution?
I move to approve Resolution Number 1421.
One second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just ditto on what Dr. Harris you said. Our counselors are doing outstanding work, and we recognize them every week, but it's nice to have a special one.
Exactly. Okay, all those, the motion was made by Mr. Eng and seconded by Mr. Chung. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. No items were removed from the consent agenda, so we're to the first information item. Dana Middle School Board Presentation, School Spotlight. Dr. Forsy, would you like to take over?
Thank you, Madam President. Excited to have Dana for our second school spotlight and our first middle school. And in thinking about this, I was reminded that Dana's planned open house was scheduled literally the week we went on closure. And so they were, they were kind of the first one through that door of how do we reimagine things in a virtual environment? Never guessing we'd be here a year later, but here we are, and we're going to make the best of it. And so this, we're just happy that this provides an opportunity to show the public and the board the things that have been going on at our schools every day. And so we're thrilled to have Dr. Hacking here with his staff. And so with that, Dr. Hacking, take over.
The Dana community is our anchor. It gives us purpose, a sense of belonging, and it's what keeps us together. 2020 was a year that raised our awareness and tested our resilience. But as we weather this storm, it's the support of our Dana community that holds us together.
Hello, I'm Dr. Hacking, principal of Dana Middle School.
And I'm Bradley Smith, the assistant principal at Dana Middle School.
And we would like to welcome the Arcadia Unified School Board and Dr. Van Astal to our presentation this evening.
And we're going to be telling our story through Dana community.
This is the awkward bit where we do the transition, so we're going to be putting up a presentation. Thank you, Mr. Bramley. Good evening, President Kay Kinsler, Vice President Lee Chavez, Clerk Fentoneng, and members of the board, Raymond Chau- members of the board, Raymond Chung and Shirley Yi. And no, I have not forgotten Superintendent Dr. Vinalstal. We invite you to set sail on a journey about Dana Middle School. Can go to the next slide now, Scott. But first, we need to raise the anchor. So I'll step aside and turn the story over to our fabulous crew of teachers, staff, parents, and students, starting with one of our very own, Mrs. Jana Sanchez.
You did, Jim. Anna, you're on mute.
There we go, let's try this again. Hi. Let's try this again. I'm so not used to that. So used to being the teacher and having unmuted the whole time. My name is Jana Sanchez, and I teach physical education and health at Dana. I teach eighth grade. And who would have ever thought that I would be teaching PE through a computer screen, right? How crazy is this? These are crazy times. And with online learning, these things have definitely been different. Although I'm able to give my students the opportunity to move, I have actually no idea what they're able to do and not do in their homes. So one of the things that I've been able to do is connect with my students through something called SEL, or Social Emotional Learning. And I've really been focusing my time on the mental and social and emotional wellness of our children. One of the activities that I've chosen is, or I created, was called Wellness Bingo, where the students had a bunch of opportunities to choose different items to do at home to work on their emotional and social wellness. Something like play a board game with your family, get off technology for three hours, write a note of thank you to somebody you care about. And what you're looking at right now on screen was an activity that we did called Thankful, Grateful, and Blessed. And the directions were, rather than focusing on something that we don't have, what are things that you're grateful for during these times? And look at some of these words that they wrote, and these are my favorite. My mom for making sure I have great meals, spending time with my grandparents for the first time, my dad for protecting us, my Chromebook, yay! And of course, my favorite, right there in the middle, our teachers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anya Lai, and I participated in the Procrastination Party. I personally think this is a great way to grow community and do work at the same time. The first reason is that the atmosphere was really relaxing, and it made me feel like there was no stress. The second reason is that during Mr. Childs was working with another student, we all talked and helped each other on our assignment.
Good evening, I'm Paul Childs, and I teach eighth grade English as well as theater and film. Anya did a great job giving you a specific perspective on our party. Now I'm going to give you the backstory. I've been noticing that over half of my students were literally turning in their work on Google Classroom at the last minute. And I was about ready to lecture them about that, and then I just, I had a moment where I thought, why not embrace them as they are? So I formed this Friday Night Procrastination Party. It was a big hit. Kids were laughing, telling jokes, and as Anya alluded to, they were relaxed, it didn't feel like school to them. And Jeffrey Lee, who you might remember of class of 2020, Arcadia High School, dropped in and did a magic trick for entertainment. And in the midst of this spontaneous celebration of community, over 30 students completed their work during a, some of them stayed for two hours, and almost all of them had top scores on what they were working on. So they had fun, and they did a great job at the same time. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Evelyn Toy, and I'm an eighth grader and the ASB president here at Dana Middle School. You see, one bright aspect of 2020 is the awareness it's brought. Teachers like Mrs. Spar and Mrs. Hamblin bring that awareness to the classroom by asking for pronouns and providing mental health resources, as you can see an image right there on the document. And many of my close friends who identify by a mix of pronouns confided in me that this was felt, that they felt that this was the first time that they had been heard and represented. You see, here at Dana Middle School, we value representation, which is why as ASB, we are trying to do our part by creating Spirit Days, like Cultural Appreciation Week. Though we may not be at the level where we are ready to have events like LGBTQ Week, per se, we're building up to that with familiar subjects like culture. Ever since distance learning started, we've been lacking that competitive community that we're all known for. But by not only having educational contests like Reflections, but also fun contests that ASB hosts like baking gingerbread houses, it brings back that atmosphere. Here at Dana, we are constantly striving to strengthen our inclusivity, and this is just one step in the right direction.
Well, good evening and hello to everyone tuning in. My name is Anthony Deema. I teach sixth grade history and film studies elective at my beloved Dana. My vocation started in 1999, but this is my eighth year with the district, all with Dana. And I feel tremendously blessed to be surrounded by so many passionate and devoted colleagues. You can see many of them in the photo at the bottom right of the screen. Their talents and dexterity, that humbles me. COVID-19 has impacted lives around the world in many destructive ways, and sadly, our school year has been seized by it. My fellow Dana Mariners and I have been sailing in turbulent waters for almost a year now. And aboard with us on this uncharted journey are almost 700 students and their families. Together, our resolve is keeping our ship safely afloat, but make no mistake, every day, we look forward to anchoring on our familiar shore. Until that glorious reunion occurs, making connections with our students on a level that goes beyond the academics has taken a priority for me. You've probably heard the reports as I have about America's young people becoming isolated, withdrawn, anxious, depressed, and worst of all, suicidal. Keeping my classes engaged and motivated and productive with relevant curriculum is now and always will be a cornerstone for me. But this year, a higher-than-usual priority is being placed on community and building connections with the students. I think that more than ever, this is crucial to their physical and mental health, as well as that of myself and my five-year-old son. One of the great programs that I think has been implemented is the Thursday Afternoon Social Gathering. This program is the brainchild of one Mr. Bradley Smith, our new AP. Utilizing Google Meets, Dana has managed to create a place for students to come and just casually and comfortably hang out with their peers, with Dana Administration, with anyone on staff, and that includes myself. I try to attend every week. During this valuable time, activities such as a waterfall or a fist-to-five check-in occurs just to see how we're doing. From these kind of activities, fruitful conversations are spawned, and opportunities for deep bonds are occurring. We also tend to play some games, such as Scattergories, which gets surprisingly competitive and intense, but in a fun way. I mean, I don't like losing, okay, so it's me. Engaging our students and reviving the respectful, lively banter with them, for me, that's truly the happiest part of the day. I miss that immensely. Yesterday, California lifted the regional stay-at-home order. That's a positive move toward our return to normalcy. And tomorrow, ironically, marks the 100th day of the school year. The time we've lost, we can never recover that. The note that's on the bottom left of the screen here was taken from a student of mine last year, and in looking at it and reading it, to me, it reads like a prophecy. This morning, I was reflecting on the destructive wildfires from several months ago when an analogy came to me, if you'll allow me. Back on March 13th, 2020, I was instructed to evacuate my second home. I had resided there for seven years in a small but cozy unit number 12. I knew I wouldn't be back for a long time. Ten and a half months have since passed, and I'm still prohibited from returning to my home away from home. I feel the loss of my classroom, but worse than that, I feel the loss of my Dana family and my kids. I long to see everyone again in person and rebuild what I and so many others have lost. Can we endure another eight months? I honestly don't know, and I don't want to know. I think we must look to the future now. I imagine a safe and confident return to school sooner than expected. We should all inquire about what needs to be done to successfully return, and let's inspire others to follow our bold lead. After all, that is the true Arcadia way. It's time for our comeback voyage to prepare and set sail. Anchors away. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Anna, and I have a daughter who is in seventh grade. The comment that I have on my slide, that is exactly what happened in our house. The struggle is real. I'm sure all these teachers struggle much more than we do. Still, I would say that Dana's teachers have done a fantastic job teaching our children. Even for PE class, which I would think was going to be a challenge when done virtually, I was pleasantly surprised by the creativity of her teacher in making sure that the students were actively participating. She does miss going to school. I miss going to her school. I used to walk her to school and help out with different PTSA events, but now I can't do that anymore. I miss the community and the communication with teachers and other parents. As the PTSA program chair, I keep thinking, what can we do to reach out to our students and their family? Last year, we were able to organize a few virtual events, such as Meet with the Author, Halloween Storytime, Parents' Gathering, and 12 Days of Christmas Family Activities. And this year, we're planning to do more community gathering events to keep us together even though we're apart. It's been truly a great partnership between our PTSA with Dr. Hacking, Mr. Smith, and the teachers to reach out to our community. They have been very responsive and very helpful, and I know that together, we will get through this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Tarzalla, the Library Assistant at Dana. And the first point I wanted to make is that Chromebooks have been the lifeboats for our students during this COVID closure. As Mrs. Sanchez showed you, even some of them are thankful that they have them. And most of my work hours since March, frankly, have been spent keeping students afloat by replacing malfunctioning Chromebooks. It's been a struggle to get enough functioning units to replace all the ones that go bad. I think maybe all of us assumed that Chromebook problems would diminish when students weren't carrying them around all the time. No, not the case. It's been a constant struggle for Nancy Sager and me to meet the demand. And let me give you a guided tour through the image on my slide here. On the bookshelves to the right of the image, those are repairs for Nancy Sager. They're waiting for her to take to her repair shop where she has even more that she's working on. On the Chromebook cart, the center shelf, those were seven newly repaired Chromebooks that were available last week, and they are all gone now. Having seven functional Chromebooks was a great high point for the year. On the top shelf, we see Chromebooks waiting for me to check so that they don't have to go into Nancy's repair queue. On Monday, I took five of those out. They were from students who left the district and apparently had no problems. I cleaned and updated and reset them and checked all the different functions, and three passed. Two were sent down immediately on Monday, and today, I had a call for help about a broken screen. I had none left, but Nancy brought three repaired ones in today. And that's kind of where we are with supply and demand. It's a daily struggle. The final point I wanted to speak about is the wide range of technical issues that students face. I'm in the library every day to throw students a life preserver when they issue a distress call, and my goal is a one-school-day-or-less response time to trouble reports. And trouble reports are often a simple problem. It won't turn on. The camera doesn't work anymore. It fell and broke from a high shelf, like today. I stood up on the patio, and it fell and broke on the patio concrete. My siblings were running through the house with the dog, and they knocked it off the table. Those are straightforward things, but problems aren't always simple. And they range from, at one end of the spectrum, individual student problems, like one student who was convinced that their account had been hacked, and that took a lot of emails back and forth until finally, it was handed over to Mr. Smith and their parents to figure out what was really going on with that particular student. And at the other end, there was the widespread shutdown issue, which began before Thanksgiving and affected dozens of students. And it was finally resolved the week before winter break, but for many of those days in between, I was only able to offer comfort and update students on the TIS's attempts to fix the issue. So that kind of gives you a snapshot of Chromebooks during this year at one school. In conclusion, I'd like to say that I really feel my job is to advocate for Dana's students when technology fails them. And I try to be an anchor in the rough seas of distance learning this year. Thank you.
Oh, great, it's my turn. Hi, I'm Jennifer Ari. I am the School Counselor at Dana, and I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about our first-ever All-Middle School Wellness Day, courtesy of the middle school counselors and school psychologists, which is going to be taking place on February 25th during the school day. Every single middle school student in the district will participate in a day of self-discovery to promote well-being. We have four sessions planned with engaging speakers, hands-on wellness strategies, yoga, breathing techniques, and much more. All students will also get a swag bag with fun items, as well as a wellness journal to guide their day. We invite you to attend as well. And look for a special dance break from our fabulous, albeit shameless, middle school principals. We hope to see you there.
Hi, I'm Elise Hamblin, and I have the privilege of speaking to you tonight about Dana's Avid Program. Avid prides itself on community. Of the 22 students enrolled in Avid 7 at the end of last year, we had 21 enroll in Avid 8 as their elective this year, even though they knew we wouldn't be visiting colleges in person. We've always called it Avid Family, and like a huge family visiting Disney World, we love to wear matching outfits. You can see them on the screen, you can see them modeled here in person. So even though there was to be no in-person field trips this year, we still ordered our Avid gear. The concept of family became literal this year, as one of my students is my eighth-grade daughter, Olivia. She's marked on the slide with red hearts, and she attends her classes across the hall from me. Other students in this class I've known since kindergarten. I've been some of their Girl Scout leaders, and some of them are younger siblings of Avid students we've had in the past that came to Avid parent nights with their parents. This is a group of eighth graders I've been waiting many years to have in my classes, and it breaks my heart that this is the year I have them. Avid students have high expectations of themselves and of their teacher. So to that end, we're trying to keep our classes as normal as possible, doing our best to follow the tenants of Avid, including having weekly collaborative study groups shown on the screen, taking virtual college field trips, and focusing on executive functioning skills, which are useful in all their classes, in life, and our preview of Avid 9, which most of them plan to enroll in at Arcadia High School next year. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Saf Shenun, and I'm an eighth grader here and one of the web leaders here at Dana. Because of distance learning, the web leaders and the new students. We offer meetings twice a month for all new students. During our online meetings, we do fun community-building activities, such as trivia, quizzes, Would You Rather games, holiday-themed meetings, and we make sure to ask multiple questions to encourage our web kids to talk about what they're passionate about and encourages them in school. For example, we had a Halloween-themed meeting for the web leaders and web kids dressed up in their costumes and did multiple games like Halloween Bingo, trivia, Halloween Would You Rather, and many more, along with questions about their costumes and about their plans for Halloween. Outside of these meetings, we also have web leaders creating group chats to chat with their web students. This has helped prove how comfortable the web students feel at the web leaders, especially with being online. Four web leaders meet every Wednesday with Miss- Four web leaders meet every Wednesday with Mrs. Sanchez's advisory class, acting as peer mentors, and a group of web leaders are working with Ms. Ari and a group of fifth graders for Dana Academy. Although this pandemic has caused a lot of negative events, a positive to it is that the web leaders have been able to find out more about the web students and form a deeper connection with our frequent meetings.
Hi, everyone. I'm Allison Suzuki, science teacher. This year, teaching seventh grade science, I've had to be very selective with choosing which content in the curriculum to teach, ultimately emphasizing mostly content that's hands-on, just like in the picture you see, and anything might, that might pique student curiosity. And what I found is that in spite of making such changes to my teaching and in focusing on the most interesting and engaging content, students are still struggling to focus and struggling to stay motivated or engaged. As fun as I'd like to believe, I make science for the kiddos this year. The most fun I've personally had and the most fun I've seen my students have is not in science, but in advisory class. It's been advisory where we've been able to make personal connections, talk about real struggles, build relationships, and yet still have time for fun, to be silly and be genuinely engaged in something outside of academics. My advisory students often lose track of time and want to stay longer because they're having such a good time with each other, something I wish I'd see more often. And it's the one class where I've had students feel comfortable enough to personally reach out to me privately through email because they needed adult support due to scary and overwhelming things going on at home. Thankfully, it's been the, the class where I feel like I can really provide them the social emotional support and empathy they need during this difficult time. Thank you.
Hi, my son is a student at Goles Program since fourth grade. He has done so well in this program. I could not thank them enough. They really, they saved his life, and they saved my life. I mean, it's amazing how a kid can go from getting suspended and being very unhappy and not liking school to loving school, having friends for the first time. Kids aren't scared of him anymore. He no longer lashes out in anger. He no longer breaks things. He's not unpredictable anymore. He is happy, and he enjoys going to school through positive reinforcement, through tools that they've given him. They saved my child, and I can never thank them enough. Thank you.
This is why we do what we do. Good evening. I'm Allison Talbot, Goles Classroom teacher. I say "we" and not "I" because this work and these outcomes are the result of teamwork. Our Goles team has the most fabulous group of professionals working together to meet the needs of our students. Over the years that our team has been together and worked together, we have truly become a family, and we truly love each other. And I've told my team they can't leave until I retire. Each team member has unique skill sets which allow us to reach every student. Virtual learning has not been easy, but what we found that makes it work is flexibility and reimagining ways to inspire our students emotionally and academically. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Christine Lynn, ELD instructional coach. Thirty-six years ago, I moved here from Taiwan. Not knowing a word of English, I was an English learner at Camino Grove. Then I moved on to Dana. I was speaking good conversational English, but struggled in all of my core classes. Reflecting on my personal journey as an ELD student and watching my own parents face their struggles have led me to empathize with our ELD parents in Arcadia. What they need most is having someone to connect with and also a link to school and the district. These parents are still asking the same questions my parents asked sixty, thirty-six years ago. In the last few years, we've have improved the way we build community with our ELD parents through ELAC and DLEC meetings. We not only demonstrate that we value their questions and suggestions, but also introduce issues that are important to them. Our district translators also play an integral part, as they are part of every meeting, to enable parents to communicate and participate in discussion. Every ELAC meeting that Dana has had lasted two hours, sometimes three, because there's always a meeting after the meeting. We have created a safe place for parents to voice their burdens and appreciation. Together as a team, we serve as a bridge for all stakeholders. David once asked me if our program is better now than seven years ago when I started coaching. I would proudly say that we have made significant strides building community with our ELD parents. Thank you.
Good evening to you all. I'm Bradley Smith, the assistant principal at Dana Middle School. And like all of our schools in Arcadia, Dana remains focused on building relationships, adapting to challenges, and offering empathy and support to our families and our students. One way we have initiated this is through the use of a text messaging translation app called Talking Points. This app allows us to remove many of our language barriers, helping us to build stronger relationships with our families. More importantly, through the use of this app, we learned about a family that is struggling to meet the basic needs for their children. Through text messaging, a quick relationship was formed that led to the development of a small Dana team coming together, along with our Arcadia Assistance League, to wrap around this family and their child. We are proud of the immediate support we provided this family and others that followed. And for those considering to use this app, it should be noted that the phrase "I am here to support you" in Indonesian translates to offering financial support. And I learned that from Anna, a parent on our panel, so I've, I made sure to change my language in using that app. And that being said, despite all the changes, all the challenges that we are enduring, Dana is committed to finding opportunities to grow. For it is the strength of the combined efforts of our staff, our families, our students, our instructional coaches, and the guidance of our district leaders that we are in a wonderful position to build a brighter future for our community. Daniel, you're on mute, buddy.
Right then. Yeah, I'm not good at this either. The end of the lunar year is only two weeks away, and this fits perfectly into our story. We are currently in the year of the rat, and it is the golden rat at that. One characteristic of the rat is awareness. What a perfect year to be aware with all that has gone on in the last 12 months. Another characteristic of the rat is resilience. We have been nothing if not resilient as we supported our community during distant learning. On February 12th, 2021, we will be entering the year of the ox. The characteristics of the ox are responsibility, hard work, and groundedness. As you have heard from our presentation, all these elements are in vast supply at Dana as we work our way through these troubled times. Also, a golden year for the ox, the element of the gold represents an added opportunity in waiting, and the most efficient way to get to the gold is through learning. In the words of the famous Mr. Dana that's right there on our anchor, "Those who teach must never cease to learn." Mr. Bramley, if you could play our final video.
In the year ahead, we know there will be more responsibility and the prospect of more hard work. But as a community, we are grounded in the knowledge that this storm will pass, and together, the excitement and hope of new adventures will soon be with us again.
One thing that has been hard during distance learning is just being able to fully comprehend the lessons my teachers teach me.
For me personally, when it comes to distance learning, I have internet issues, and I, my internet cuts off every 10 to 15 minutes.
Something that's been hard due to distance learning is that it feels harder to participate in class, and we don't get to talk to our friends very often.
I do feel like I have grown as a person from this experience because I've learned to appreciate the little things more.
Well, I know it's been pretty simple to just roll out of bed in the mornings to go to school. Distance learning has been pretty hard on everyone in our Dana community, and I know we couldn't have gotten through it at all without our wonderful Dana teachers. They've been working a lot harder and made a lot more accommodations to help everyone through this tough time, and I just want to thank them for that.
And I love how Dana's schedule is set up this year, how we're starting an hour later and our school days aren't as long. Because I feel like oftentimes, we just get so tired by the end of the school day that like when our brains start functioning properly.
I like how we have all of our classes together so that we just have lunch and finish our homework and study afterwards.
There's nothing in particular that I've really struggled with. And yes, I'm very excited to see all the teachers and my, all my friends back on campus.
I'm excited to look forward to going back to campus and seeing all my friends and teachers again.
In the year ahead, we know there will be more responsibility and the prospect of more hard work. But as a community, we are grounded in the knowledge that this storm will pass, and together, the excitement and hope of new adventures will soon be with us again.
President Kinsler, that concludes our presentation. Thank you very much for listening, everybody.
Well, that was just a fabulous, fabulous presentation. Do we get to ask questions and such?
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I have to start off with a question. I, first, I love the fact that you guys are doing so much in so many different ways to build community. It does my heart good because I know our kids are in great hands, and you guys are creating a million safety nets by all these different ways. Your Thursday afternoon social gatherings, if you're having all students and teachers jump on there, how does that logistically work so that you can all be on Google meets? Because I can't see everybody who's even all on this meeting on one screen. So how do you work that out?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you want me to take that? Great question, Kay. It is an open invitation to every student and staff member. We only had about 35 students that started at the beginning of the year that were joining us. That, that community has, it's, it's at about 15 to 20 students now, and they, they show up regularly every single Thursday. And so in my opinion, it's doing exactly what it needs to be. It's, it's founding a, a small group of students that are building relationships with each other. As Mr. Diman mentioned, he shows up every Thursday. The students love connecting with him and myself and Dr. Hacking and the, the other adults that show up. So it's just another way for us to build those connections, and our, our students appreciate it.
Fabulous. Thank you. Any other questions from other board members?
Oh, I just wanted to also just commend Dr. Hacking and his staff. It was a great presentation. It was great to see all the things that you, your teachers and your staff are doing. And like Kay said, I just really love that whole emphasis on building relationships. It's such an important thing to do, especially during this time, and definitely something that can be brought forward when we return to school. And the one thing that I actually, I had never heard of the Goles Program before, and it just sounds like a wonderful program that really makes an impact. And I'm just wondering if that is something that is unique to Dana? Or is it something that is being, you know, that is being used at the other middle schools?
Allison?
It's, uh, Goles is a Selpa program. And Arcadia and South Pasadena are the two middle school Selpa Go- Goles programs. I wish we could have this kind of education at every school site. It's, it's truly invaluable. We, social emotional learning, just, it's all about connecting first and then getting, because these students are students with emotional disturbance. And yeah, it's the most meaningful job I've ever had.
It just, it, it just sounds amazing, and you know, the video of the, the parent, I mean, it obviously has made such a life-changing impact on their family and as well as your students. So congratulations on that. And yes, I agree, it would be great to have it at all the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, I'll just chime in really quickly and say thank you to the students and parents. And there's, I just appreciate that there's such a range of folks from your community here tonight to present and speak on behalf. You guys are really living two values, especially from what I see, and it's the empathy and the creativity, because I think someone said, you know, you're having to reimagine every job. And just a few of the things that really stand out to me from this presentation. One, Ms. Tarzalla, thanks for advocating for your students because these are not easy times, and it's those bumps in the road that, you know, sometimes we tend to gloss over, and we need to keep on it and keep pushing for our kids. And so I, you know, highlighting both the difficulties as well as the successes shows a lot of trust, and I appreciate you bringing that. And I wanted to say to Ms. Suzuki, thanks for being there during advisory because I think, you know, the academics are there, but we all know that without that basis of relationship and trust, nothing academic happens anyway. And so being there for those kids is what's going to make the difference for them in the other classes, and they'll catch up in the science because we're going to work so hard when we all come back. But knowing what's truly important and where we can connect is what's going to make the difference this year. And that's true across the board. The things like the procrastination party, the empathy in seeing, how can I help kids without, you know, making them feel bad that they're waiting till the end? How do we make this a positive experience and turning something on its head like that is, it's just, it speaks volumes about the approach. And I know that as a team, that's the approach that you're taking, and it's clear across the board. And just the last thing, there's so much I have to say, but I'm going to just go with one last point. I really appreciated the listening to the student voice and the strengthening, the inclusivity because it's hard work that needs to be done. And as adults and teachers and administrators, hearing from our kids what they need and what they feel is important really needs to be driving some of our process. And so thank you for providing that opportunity, and thank you to the kids who are working through that with us. So I will leave it at there, but I'm just, I'm so touched that you all made time to be here. So thank you.
Just to add my thoughts on gratitude as well. Thank you, Dr. Hacking. Thank you for everyone who presented today. Everyone's already said so much, but you know, I just want to say that I most appreciated just hearing from want to say that I most appreciated just hearing from everybody and you know, what I could hear in your voice, not just the actions that you presented, but from, from how you presented it, I could hear the, the empathy. I could hear the caring. I could hear the love in your voices for the students and your, the hard work to meet their social emotional needs. Right now, those are the needs that are most critical. So really, I, I just want to let you know that, that you're appreciated, all of your hard work and thank you.
And I'll continue on that. My fellow board members have expressed a lot of what I'd like to express, but again, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's incredible how everyone is playing a role and trying to continue and keep things going. You're all heroes. Our teachers are heroes. Thank you for being resilient. Thank you for being innovative. Thank you for being passionate and thank you for caring. This is, this is incredible work. This is heroic. Really appreciate it. And thank you for keeping it fun. School should be fun. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I, I just have to add, thank you for telling us your challenges as well because that, that's crucial. We need to have a sense of what really are the problems because otherwise we become out of touch if we only hear the good. So thank you for that.
I just want to say, that was a bit of a risk, but I have to say the trust and the support of the board really makes us able to present warts and all because we're working really hard, but it's not easy and you can hear the compassion in everybody's voice and how hard everybody's working. I just couldn't be prouder of this wonderful school and everybody in it. So thank you for letting us share that tonight.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just kudos for working in all of the sailing puns because I just love the way you guys bring out the personality and, and the specialness of Dana with everything you do. And it's great. It's very buoyant and it's awesome. Thank you.
Not lost either. All the red.
And I wanted to say, I did not connect with Lee beforehand, but her inspiration just tied in perfectly. And I hear she's wearing anchor earrings. So that's all I'm going to say. There we go.
Okay. Thank you all. I have to get my proper piece of paper here. With that, we're now to Dr. Van Oostal for the COVID-19 department updates.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. As we have been doing, we're going to run through the different reports. Let me pull it up here. Yes. So we'll each do a report on our area and, and then if we have any questions, we'll, I'll take those after each report just so that we don't have to hold all of those to the end. So let's start with our Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, Derek Esland.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. I will hold off any comments about budget and finance until David Vong's presentation on the budget. So you only have to go through that one time. So most of what I'm actually going to talk about this, this evening are highlighting some of our staff members, some recognition. So starting with facilities and operational services. You may recall, we had some issues with the heating and air conditioning units at Camino Grove. I'm happy to say that they are all now completely installed and up and running just in time for this really cold weather. And a huge thank you to all of our maintenance team, but especially Rudy Vergara, who really led the effort to make sure that everyone was getting everything installed properly. Moving on to transportation, I want to say congratulations to Luis Puente, who is our transportation dispatcher. But not only was he our 2020 Classified Employee of the Year, but he also just completed the CASBO Transportation Leadership Academy. This is a relatively new year-long certificate program. Gabriel Santos, our manager over in FOS, completed this academy just a couple years ago and he was actually in the first class. So still fairly new and Luis just finished. So congratulations to him. It's a rigorous class. In Fiscal Services, some of you may know Sarah Lively Lopez, the Administrative Assistant. We're sad to say goodbye to Sarah, but also happy for her. She's moving on to a position at the County Office of Education where she's pursuing her career interest in human resources. And, and she's not going far. She's actually going to be working on the best project, which is the new HR and accounting system that we're going to be implementing in the next year or so. I'm sure she'll be back to give us a hand with that process. And so we'd like to now welcome into Fiscal Services Valerie Sanchez. She'll be the new Administrative Assistant and she comes to us from Hugo Reed where she was the office assistant at the elementary school. We're very happy to have her onboard. In Nutrition Services, they continue to serve meals in any weather, whether it be the heat of the summer or the cold and the rain of winter. I think at this point, their, their range of weather is maybe 50 to 60 degrees, but they continue to be out there every day. And just a huge thank you to all of them. In particular, I want to say congratulations to Lisa Gillette, who she's actually currently working at Dana in the cafeteria. She's retiring after 26 years of service to our, our Arcadia students. So thank you to Lisa and good luck and enjoy retirement. And that is it for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Derek? All right. Thank you for those celebrations. Next up, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource Services, Dr. Harishu.
All right. Thank you. So tonight I'll be reporting on Health Services, Special Education and, and Human Resource Services. So Health Services on behalf of Nurse Erica Newkirk. The COVID-19 cases and exposures among faculty and staff have been declining since the start of the new year, which is hopeful to us. So just wanted to share that bit of information with you. The high school outbreak is officially closed now and we learned a great deal from the Department of Public Health. And we are certainly optimistic about implementing their recommendations to, across the district, to all of our sites. And the Department of Public Health stated that they really appreciated the partnership with us as well. AUSD Health Services staff and/or, excuse me, AUSD Health Services staff, working in health-related roles for the district, became eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine in Phase 1A and have already started to receive their vaccinations. In addition, some of our nurses have been able to volunteer at the point of distributions to help give vaccines to others. So that's exciting. AUSD Health Services staff attended a virtual LECO training for school health office staff as part of preparing for our eventual return for students. And finally, Health Services staff were happy to assist with the PSATs hosted at the high school. They were help, they were helping with reviewing the health screenings and performing temperature checks. Moving on to Special Education on behalf of Catherine Mahoney, the department continues to be cautious in terms of in-person assessments. So they paused them through the end of January per the memo sent out by the Department of Public Health. The, our bus drivers and Transportation Department continue to be an incredible partner in ensuring our students receive instructional materials prepared by our Special Education teachers and service providers. Luis Puente is amazing. Thank you to our Special Education staff and parents who continue to be wonderful teams supporting students. Our parents have been exceptional and we appreciate all their collaboration. Moving on to Human Resource Services, one of our big projects right now is to be preparing employment verification letters for all of the staff in AUSD as we anticipate that the next phase of vaccinations, which will be open up, opening up to educators under the 1B phase, will be happening soon and hopefully in early February. So my team is preparing a process to be able to swiftly get those verification letters out to all employees so that they can take advantage of the opportunities to get vaccinated. Next, HR is collaborating with Ed Services and TIS to prepare for the launch of our February 1 enrollment process. This is a little earlier than normal. And if families want more information on that, they can simply access our enrollment page on our district website for, for specifics. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Harishu?
I don't have a question, but I would have never thought about having to do employment verification documentation for the vaccine. So it's, it's really helpful to know that you're going through that to have everybody, so that anybody who wants the vaccine can, of our employees can go get it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're very welcome. You know, in most cases, people's, you know, could probably bring their, bring their badge as verification, but we just want to make sure, you know, some people may have that in their office and they're working from home. So we just want to make sure that people have what they need to get that right away. So I'm very thankful for the work of my team in doing that.
All right. Next up, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services, Dr. Forsy.
All right. Good evening. AHS was able to have a very successful and safe PSAT administration just this morning. And that was a huge accomplishment in being able to deliver that assessment that we know in Arcadia is so important for so many of our, our kids. And so that was a, it was kind of, it's kind of like our first step forward in this. So it was great to hear that. We will be beginning our remote LPAC testing for our English learners at the secondary level next week. So you may be, begin to hear things about that, but that is a remote assessment. And then lastly, SWAG feedback. As, as many of you remember, last spring, we worked with our C-TAC Advisory Group to move towards offering optional directed professional development opportunities with and for our staff for the 2021 school year. And we went as far as to set up the courses collaboratively so that staff could pick in the spring which courses they wanted more, more directed PD and training in. This was a significant move forward and an indicator of the mutual trust we share within our AUSD working groups. When it became clear over the summer, we would be opening school in a virtual setting, we shifted away from those scheduled course offerings and instead used the SWAG time in job-alike and grade-level groups to support teachers and student learning in the virtual environment. January 14th was our fourth SWAG of this year and we again adjusted towards a directed PD learning opportunity, which was still optional, led by our instructional coaches with approximately 100 of our teachers participating. The feedback received was overwhelmingly positive with over 95% of participants giving either four or five stars out of a possible five. Again, demonstrating the trusting and collaborative relationships continually being developed with and amongst our staff. And so we started in a direction, we, we tacked away from that when it, when it wasn't going to work. And now we're going to gradually tack back towards that direction. And that is my update from Ed Services tonight.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Forsy?
It's just really nice to hear that we were able to pull off the PSAT. I think that was probably really important. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Lee. All right. Next up, we have our Chief Strategy and Innovation Officer, Greg Duzanian.
Thank you, Dr. Van Oostal. Just a few updates for tonight. I just wanted to start off with a quick update on our grant process. As you know, we are continuing to hand out grants this year, which is always fun, interesting and exciting. Tonight, I just want to share one grant we received recently. And I do want to frame this by saying, you know, a lot of times when you hear reports at these board meetings, they're about big programs that we're rolling out. That's not what this is when I share it. This is one person who's trying one thing and we love that because it helps us understand what the needs are and what the options are out there. So right now, we are working on a grant for a math teacher who wants a digital tablet. And what that will allow the math teacher to do is, you know, walk through problems on this digital tablet and it will stream out to all of the students right there on their computers. So you know, compared to having to do like a presentation where everything's set up ahead of time, this will allow the teacher to adjust in real time and stream that out. And also if they want you to record it, to provide later to students. It provides that more traditional experience where they can be agile enough to adapt to what students are asking, but in electronic format. You know, one, this is really cool and really important during COVID while kids are away. But also we think there's going to be some application when kids come back next year and teachers can create recordings in real time of these, these examples. So again, it's one grant. We're going to explore it, but we're learning every time we do this. So no, thanks to everyone supporting that and for the teachers who continue to make those requests. In terms of research and data, we are continuing to build our research library. I believe I mentioned it last time, but you know, we want to see everything out there as far as best practices, as far as virtual. And as we head into our recovery time and being back in person, you know, what do we need to be thinking about in terms of how we support our students? And are there continuing opportunities in terms of what we've learned in terms of virtual? So we're doing that. We're also very exciting to say we are sending 16 people for in-depth training on data. Data is going to be very important moving forward, especially as we see where our students are at and understanding really whether, where there's any learning loss or just what data we have coming back to us. So 16 people are going to be doing extensive training with Power School, which is our student information system. We'll support them however we can in that. And with that being said, I just want to take a moment to thank Scott Bramley, the rest of his technology team. You know, every time we do these things in terms of tablets or in terms of data, that's directly connected to technology and we couldn't do it without all of the positive support we get from Scott. I, I email them a lot and they've always been, you know, amazingly responsive with just a great attitude. So none of that would be possible without Scott and his team and you know, we certainly appreciate it for that. Finally, very excited to continue to share that the Better Together survey data has been compiled. Our administrative team sat with the team online, the research team who did the research, and we're super excited about it. I won't give too much away because on February 23rd, we're going to have our community engagement and sharing night where we share that out. But what I can't say is the data is looking very positive. I know I'm going to be the third person to reference it, but Vice President Chavez, that quote on community was perfect in the context of Better Together as well. Because really what we're measuring is the health of our community and our community is healthy. So on February 23rd, we're going to be streaming out information live from Alan Daly and his team who did the Better Together research. We're really going to dive into that data. So we're looking forward to that. And with that, I'm happy to field any questions if there are any.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our Chief Communications Officer, Ryan Ferran.
Good evening, everyone. Great to see you. Great to be here. I love, you know, it was a Dana Mariner night. Everyone was in red and congratulations to Lee. It's just, I'm like, how did we not think of that? I was going to go put on a red tie, but anyway, that was awesome. Update 33, Coronavirus Update 33 went out on Friday. Received very well, didn't get really many emails back or too many questions. Got about a thousand views on YouTube, about 700 on our Facebook page. And some people may not know, but David took the extra step of sending a personal video just to staff, which I think was a really nice touch, just to address some things that staff may have been wondering about and just to do that personal connection video with staff, which was fantastic. So I think that was really appreciated as well. Saturday marked our one-year anniversary of our first coronavirus update. We talked about March 13th as when we closed down schools, but I'm very proud of our district for our transparency and I would bet there's not a district in Southern California that sent out anything with a coronavirus word in it before we did at the end of January. So it's been a long haul for us. We've heard from Dana about, you know, some of their challenges and the amazing work their staff is doing to help students and teachers. And so it, it's been over a year now that we've been dealing with this and seen the amazing work. So we just did a quick thank you message on our Facebook page, really thanking our students and staff and our parents because they have been amazing through this. It's not a school district going through this by ourselves in isolation. It's all of us in our community. So it's been over a year for this. So it's been quite the journey and we're not out of it yet. Our district newsletter, The Arcadia Educator, will be going out later this week. So look for that. Amber and I wanted to make sure that we give a special thanks to the city of Arcadia and specifically the Water Department. and specifically the Water Department and uh Cara Wilhelm. They've been letting us put our district newsletter in their water bill inserts in the city for years, and that's been a great resource and connection with the school district in the city. So we really appreciate Cara and the City of Arcadia and the Water Department allowing us to do that. Um, it just helps inform our our city and our community about what's happening in the school district and help get the the word out about what we're doing and further highlight our amazing teachers and staff. So a big thanks to them for that. Exciting start to the semester for DCI. We heard um Paul Childs talk about Jeffrey Lee, and he made an appearance for his class. Uh, he's a proud Dana Mariner, and he's also a proud DCI alum now at USC. Um, so that was really cool to hear about Jeffrey. Last semester in our digital communication internship, which helps as many people know, tell the story of our school district. Uh, we didn't take any new students because of the pandemic and where we're at, weren't sure if we could even continue. Uh, this semester, we have nine new students. They're super excited and eager to work with us and help share our stories. Last semester, we're so proud of the work the students did to help support their fellow students. So a lot of energy in DCI this year. So we're looking forward forward to another semester full of uh great projects to get out there. And if you haven't seen, um, I know Raymond did a nice post, and we posted about Sheldon Wright, uh AF retiring after ten years of service to AF, which is just a lifeblood to us financially and supporting and the hours of hours and hours of work. So we did a post in tribute to him for his ten years of service, and uh we managed to get him on ABC uh seven-two and they're um in the community segment. So if you haven't seen that, that is on our YouTube and Facebook page as well. A nice little honor that is well deserved for Sheldon and all of his uh work he did. If I can touch briefly on the Dana presentation, uh, it was just so great. I loved what the the board members said about the students and the parents and the teachers there, the three sixty view. It was it was really cool. Uh, we even got to see, I don't know if anyone noticed this, but even after he was done talking, uh Anthony Dima, his kid came up during it, had a question, gave him an answer, blew him a kiss, and then got back to the meeting. Just represents what teachers have to do and have been doing, the sacrifices that they make with their own kids, having a classroom, a meeting at night. So it's just you saw that within the presentation. It was just remarkable, and he didn't skip a beat. Um, it's really cool. Jennifer talked about the Wellness Conference. Uh, Amber and I have had the opportunity to sit down on some of their meetings to help promote it and talk strategy. And I was almost joking with them that there's going to be a headline in the newspaper that there's you're planning this wellness conference, but you're all so stressed out. We can't have this for the people planning the the mental health and wellness, but they're putting in so much time and effort into this and such detail and care. All extra hours on their own time, I know, but uh getting videos and doing uh all these creative ideas to help support students. So the middle school counselors are just doing amazing work. And I know Jennifer, she was on there. And um so it's just really impressive to see that. And the Dana students talking about DCI, seeing that seeing them speak tonight, some of the videos, Amber and I were already texting back. Take note of those names, future DCI interns, just very impressive students at Dana. So that was just such a great spotlight for sure.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Any questions? All right, then uh we'll end with our Chief Technology Officer, Scott Bramley. Scott?
Good evening. Um, I just have two short um announcements, but both are very significant. We will be changing internet service providers from the Foothill Education Technology Partnership to Crown Castle starting at four PM on Friday, this Friday. Um, during this time, um, all sites will have limited connectivity during the transition. And we expect internet services to be fully restored prior to starting school on Monday. Just as a reminder, we contract all of our communication services through the federal E-rate program. So there are a long process in the making. This bid actually went out uh about a year and a half ago. Um, it was really scheduled to be cut over to Crown Castle uh sometime during the summer, but with the pandemic um and some other issues that came up in the process, it's taken us all the way to January. Fortunately, Foothill Education Technology Partnership has been able to provide us service um until we get to the cut over. We don't anticipate any major issues. We have a fallback plan should there be any. Um, so we don't believe there will be anything that affects um the start of school next week, but um but and in in all honesty, knock on wood, I'm hoping this will only take a couple hours Friday night and we'll be back up and running. But it will give us the weekend to test and make sure things are um all functioning. And then the second one I'm very excited about, I mentioned this last board meeting, but our new Network Systems Administrator will be starting on Monday. And so uh we are all very excited in the department about that. And with that, um, that is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Scott?
I have no idea what it takes to transfer these systems over. Do you have to do something physically or is this all programming?
Well, it's a combination. Um, if things all go well, somebody will be at the Equinix Building in downtown Los Angeles, and they will unplug a cable from one port and plug it into another and and after a little massaging, things should should um should work well, I hope, knock on wood. But um but there may be some configuration changes in our equipment that have to take place to get everything working correctly. Greg can vouch for the fact that the that the meeting, that a couple of the meetings that I asked him to sit in on did not necessarily inspire competence. But by the end of the last one yesterday, um, I'm feeling as confident as I can about it. It's been a long time since we've um changed internet service providers. I will tell you also that that this is a about a year and a half. Um, we will have be with Crown Castle before we go back out to bid during the next school year for all of our communication services, which include internet service, wide area network, internet transport. So we will be going out for all new um communications lines uh next September or October, the the bid packet actually goes out. And then by um July first, we should have a new provider for all of those different services. And so that will be a a very big, big transition. This one hopefully will will nobody will feel too much.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And I just want to add a couple of words. Um, first of all, I, you know, Mr. Chung kind of mentioned um how you could hear and and feel um the compassion and the empathy and 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 the struggle and and what all of our staff are feeling right now as as we hit that almost a year date. And uh I share that because I I just want everyone to know that uh, you know, we are as hopeful um that as as you want to be, that we will be returning um as soon as possible. And you know, with the the vaccine information coming out, I'm getting more and more confident uh as I sit in the meetings that are on the county level, talking about the right infrastructure finally being put in place to support these super sites that have been converted from testing sites to uh vaccination sites. Um, there was five last week, you know, Dodger Stadium was the big one that everyone saw. Uh, they're bringing on five more super sites in the next week, and those uh super sites will continue to scale up. And we are also, AUSD is doing everything we can to partner with the city and and uh to to be part of the solution uh to figure out uh how to best get one of those super sites in Arcadia, uh if not the San Gabriel Valley as soon as possible. Um, we are looking forward to uh being in that next uh group. Um, phase uh one B, uh they call it, and and that's the tier one right after the early responders. Um, that was mentioned by Kevin Harishu earlier. Um, and and I do applaud his uh office for being proactive and getting those letters to everyone so that um we are ready. As you heard the staff talking, um, we we share that sentiment that uh we want to get our students back as soon as possible. And uh, you know, one of the things that we uh talk about is is getting the social, emotional, and getting kids re-acclimated to going to school. Uh, we were just having a conversation about that earlier today. And so, you know, it within the boundaries of what the the Health Department um in the county will allow, uh, we are continuing to evaluate that and what that could look like for Arcadia um as soon as possible. And uh, but without any surprises, uh, I let people know that every time that it's not going to be something that comes out on a Friday and we announce on Monday it's going to happen. Uh, but as soon as we know the rules and the parameters of how we can return and what's required, um, we will be working uh side by side with with staff and parents and students uh to make that uh return as quickly as possible. So there's a lot of hope in the air right now. Um, we're still dealing with some uh numbers that are trending down, but but much higher than than uh we we should have and especially in LA. So um, but we share that hope. I think that's the message I wanted to say is that we hear you. Um, all of us, the the school board, the administration, we we hear that that hope and that aspiration to be back as soon as possible, and we're looking forward that to that as well. So thank you, members.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for the updates. They are great. And good information. Um, we're to consent items. Could I have a motion to approve consent items A through E?
I'll move to approve consent items A through E. Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mrs. Yi and seconded by Mrs. Chavez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, study session. Governor's proposals for two ninety twenty-one, twenty-two state budget and K-12 education. Mr. Esalen?
Yes, thank you. Welcome, everybody, to the highlight of the evening. The Dana presentation was just to warm up to this. I'm going to just uh start off with some introductory comments, and then uh David Vaughn will step in and give a presentation on uh some of the specifics of the budget. But you know, a lot of these presentations, these workshops we attend about the budget, they start with, you know, like big themes, and I don't know what to call these. These are my thoughts, but we'll call them themes for the budget. Um, and first and foremost, in my mind, is, you know, number one, it's a good budget. Um, David will will talk about some specifics, and the numbers are are very encouraging. But I immediately think back to a year ago and the the January proposed budget in twenty twenty, and it was also really good. And by the time we got to May and June, things had changed so much and and for the worse. And you know, it just reminds me of the the uncertainty and the volatility that we can be faced with when it comes to school, school financing. Um, you know, hopefully COVID is once in a lifetime thing, but it's just a good reminder that you never know what's going to happen. And it and as I said, you know, by the time we get to June, in you know, this is a process. This is the first uh the first run that the governor's taking at at the budget for next year. Uh, we have many months to go and and a couple revisions to go through. And so the the budget is going to change. Um, that that we can definitely count on. I think the days of of Jerry Brown's fixed budget from January to June, I think they're gone. You know, I think Governor Newsom is, he he's starting to do things a little bit differently. Couple of things that he's doing right now, uh, he's actually re-proposing a lot of the plans that he had a year ago that got scrapped because of COVID. So he's sort of reintroducing them. And one of the things that he's doing as he introduces these is he's actually, he's not waiting until July first. We're seeing some of these proposals that he wants to take. They're calling it immediate action or early budget action on some of these proposals. Uh, and that's not something we've seen before. So we'll see how that plays out. One of the good things that he's doing, which I think he did learn from Jerry Brown, is that uh he's he's taking a conservative approach to his budget. And and he's uh restoring the reserves, both for the state as a whole and also for education in particular. You know, one of the ways that he made the budget work uh for the the twenty twenty-one year is by um setting up deferrals. You know, school districts typically get paid on a monthly basis, and that some of those payments have been postponed to later months and even into the next fiscal year. And eventually, everyone gets their money, but these these deferrals are a cash flow concern for a lot of districts. Uh, we're not so concerned about that, which is a good thing. But but what Governor Newsom is doing in his budget is he's he's restoring the budget resiliency at the state level. Uh, he's building up the reserves. He's paying down the deferrals so that if we need those things in the future, they are available for the state to access to help us smooth any sort of budget uh voluntil volatility that we may experience in the coming years. And I think those are all of my introductory comments, and I will now turn it over to David.
Thanks, Derek. So um, as you guys may recall, uh, this is the annual budget workshop that we attend uh that's facilitated by School Services uh of California. And in addition to Derek and myself, uh, we also had uh representatives from our bargaining units that attended. Um, so the data within, to give you guys some perspective, and I know especially for our new board members, uh, this, the the actual workshop uh presentation was about a hundred and forty slides. So I have hopefully spared you guys about two hours and forty-five minutes. I'm hoping to go through these next thirty slides in about fifteen minutes or so. Um, so I've definitely pared this down, but it's it's it is more than I have shared in the past, just because there was so much information that they had in this workshop. Um, and I'll follow the same cadence. Typically, what we, you know, what they do is they provide a very um macro view. We look at the US economy. Then we kind of narrow it down to the state, talks about the state budget, and then it talks about the the budget for education. And so we'll follow that same cadence. So I'll go ahead and get started because we've got a lot of information to go through. Um, as as Derek mentioned, uh, you know, it's a very promising uh budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. I think uh just based off of the the current US economic trends uh across employment, housing and consumer spending, everything is trending up um i- in a positive manner. So uh employment, there's additional jobs in December uh for housing. Uh, housing starts uh this year versus last year is actually up twelve point eight percent in terms of consumer spending uh as of November in twenty twenty, we're actually up over one percent from the year prior. So definitely a very positive um national outlook for the economy. Uh, this is a look at the uh quarterly GDP. And so, of course, what stands out right away is you'll see that in the uh the second quarter of twenty twenty, that is where we saw a significant decrease in our GDP. Uh, it dropped more than thirty percent. Thankfully, in the following quarter, there was a rebound. And in Q three, you see that we basically made all of that up. And from, you know, since since Q three, we've seen uh continued growth in the GDP. And the forecast for uh twenty twenty-one for the next four quarters uh is positive, and it ranges from the one point eight percent to six percent for the next four quarters. This is a look at the uh Dow Jones Industrial Average. So this is one of the index uh indices that, you know, people typically look at when they refer to the stock market. And what it's pointing at here is that you can see as of March uh twenty-third and twenty twenty, that was kind of at the lowest point for the Dow. Uh, it was under nineteen thousand. Fast forward to uh early January, and we're over thirty-one thousand. So we have surpassed the peak uh of the Dow pre-pandemic, which is which is amazing. So it's a very good story uh from a stock market perspective. Looking at national unemployment. So uh the top bullet on the on the left there uh kind of references long-term employment, and long-term employment is defined as folks that are out of work for more than twenty-seven consecutive weeks. This is where, this is one of the negative points. Um, and this is an area where we've seen uh the trend get worse. So basically, the the folks that are actually out of work uh for greater than twenty-seven months have made up a larger portion of unemployment as a whole. Although unemployment has definitely uh rebounded since the lowest point, and if you look at the the chart uh to the right, you'll see that uh this chart represents the percent change in employment since the peak. Um, so you'll see that, you know, at the lowest point, it was almost a fifteen percent decrease. Since then, we've rebounded, and we're about halfway uh to where we were previously uh on that red line. And that red line is projecting where where we think jobs and unemployment will lead. So it looks like over the next uh forty or so months or three and a half years, uh, that'll that'll be how long it takes us to get back to where we were prior to the pandemic in terms of unemployment. The state budget and economy, so shifting to the state. There's a lot of words on this slide, but essentially what what it's highlighting is, as Derek mentioned in his introduction, you know, last year at this time, you know, it was a very, it was a very rosy picture in terms of where we thought we would be in 2021. Few months, few months later, you know, we went from a $5.6 billion surplus at the state level to a deficit of over $53 billion. And, you know, when when we were going through that, I think there was a lot of speculation in regards to how we were gonna recover. You know, they started talking about the the V-shaped or the L-shaped recovery, the V-shaped thinking, you know, representing basically us bouncing back right away, the L-shaped, basically a prolonged recovery. What they're actually calling it now is a K-shaped recovery. And the reason why they're calling it a K-shaped recovery is because, you know, like like a K, there's actually some folks in some industries that are doing much better. Industries in terms of businesses that have low touchpoints, the tech industry has been doing great during the pandemic. And folks that are at the higher income levels have, you know, they've actually done better as well. Whereas we have other folks in other industries that have continued to suffer during the pandemic. You know, the leisure and travel industry, high touchpoints, folks at the lower income levels have continued to struggle. And so they've basically referred to what we've been seeing as a K-shaped recovery for the state and the economy. The the state unemployment, this chart actually looks at, it's not a rate. They're actually looking at the number of jobs that we've added at the state in this in the state since May of 2015. So you'll see that May of 2015, basically on the left-hand side of the chart, it continued to grow right through prior to the recession, right, right before the pandemic. And we basically peaked at about 1.6 million, 1.6 million jobs that we added. When the pandemic hit, basically those jobs, we lost approximately 2.6 million jobs. And since the lowest point, we've recovered. And as of September, we've essentially, we're back to where we were in May of 2015 in terms of the jobs that we've added. We're basically flat. But it's it's definitely a good story in terms of the recovery, and hopefully it's a, that trend continues. This is a an interesting chart. It's a, it's a look at the California median home prices. And on this chart, it goes back to 1980 through to 2020. And the gray bands, the gray vertical bands represent periods of recession. The one interesting thing here is, as you can see in that the the band in 2020, during the the pandemic, median home prices actually increased by 15%. Whereas typically during a recession, you expect median home prices to decline. But of course, this pandemic was an exception, and you know, folks were staying at home. People were basically looking for bigger homes to buy, moving to the suburbs. So it actually drove up median home prices. So as of September 2020, it was 15% higher than where we were a year ago. This is a chart on capital gains, a historical look at capital gains in the state of California. So you know, the the, we always talk about school services, California always shares how the state revenue is very volatile because it's driven by capital gains. And you know, this is just, this is a very telling chart. I looked at, I think, between 2008 and 2009 during the Great Recession. That shift in capital gains that were realized in the state was essentially $100 billion, which is significant. And so, you know, this kind of just speaks to the volatility that they always refer to. The good news is we are at record highs as of 2020. So that's definitely something that's gonna help us in the short term. Shifting over to risk in the California economy. Basically, what they referenced in terms of risks are tied to the commercial real estate industry, downtown city centers, as people relocate to lower-cost suburbs. And the risk is also obviously tied to the the ongoing pandemic and essentially, you know, how long this will last and the impact it has on small businesses. This is a look at the the big three tax revenues. So the big bar, the big bar in red is the personal income tax. The yellow is the sales and use tax, and the blue is, represents corporate tax. You see on the left-hand side, that's, those are our numbers for 2019, 2020. It improves in 2021. And when we look at 2122, sales and use tax and corporate tax declines slightly, but personal income tax actually increases by over $5 billion. And that's definitely what is primarily driving our recovery. This is the state's general fund budget summary. A lot of numbers on here. Some of the key points I just wanted to highlight were, you know, we're basically anticipating a surplus for the current year. However, in the following year, in 2122, we're anticipating to deficit spend. However, as Derek mentioned, you know, one of the things that the governor is doing is he is setting aside some funds for our reserves. So the public school system stabilization account, also known as the Public School Rainy Day Fund, is anticipated to increase from that $774 million to just under $3 billion next year. So he's contributing to to setting aside those reserves. And you can see that at a state level, the last row here on this chart, we're anticipating to be at $15.5 billion next year. And that is actually very close to where he anticipated us being in 1920. So this time last year, he was anticipating that we would end 1920 at just over $16 billion in the rainy day fund. So he's contributing to that to try to get us back to that, to that reserve level. And I I think this is a really, this is a beautiful chart because we can see that funding for Prop 98 continues to grow. One thing they mentioned during the the workshop was that you can see that in 2122, it's projected, Prop 98 funding is projected to be $85.8 billion. And that's about 3.5% greater than the year before. They were saying that seven months ago, this chart was anticipating that 2122 Prop 98 funding to be $10 billion less than where it was and where it is now. So that is a significant improvement. So so in in 2014, voters passed Pop Proposition 2. And basically, what Proposition 2 did was it established the Public Education Rainy Day Fund. And basically, what what happens with that is, you know, proposition requires that if certain conditions are met, the state has to set aside funds to this reserve. The interesting thing that is that is gonna happen is that, in addition, what Prop 2 also has is there's a condition where, once the reserve, the the public education rainy day reserve hits a certain threshold, it basically caps how much districts can keep on their on their budget as a reserve. Basically, if the rainy day fund hits 3% of Prop 98 funding, it basically triggers this cap, and LEAs are capped at 10%. Thankfully for us here in Arcadia, we commit our reserves, as you guys may recall, you know, during each session and each, you know, period where we're providing financial reports from the budget to the first interim to the second interim and our unaudited actuals in our general fund reports. When we, on that second page, I think it is, when we reflect what we have in the ending fund balance, we also reflect details of what we plan to do with those funds, where we commit those funds. And because we do that, the trigger of the reserve cap does not apply to us at a USD. Getting into the LCFF. So one of the, one of the areas where the governor is making his biggest investment in terms of ongoing funding is funding the increase of the LCFF. And he is proposing a compounded COLA of 3.84% for 2122, which represents about about $2 billion. So this is a look at the the dartboard that we typically use for our budget and planning purposes. You'll see here that, you know, this is a little different than what we're accustomed to because there's actually three rows of data. Typically, it's just one, and it's basically the COLA that we're gonna use. But of course, like everything else this year, this is gonna be a little different. So we actually have the Department of Finance estimated statutory COLA. And then we have the DOF funded COLA, and then we have the School Services estimated statutory COLA. So what that 3.84% is basically made up of is he's proposing to basically fund the 2.31% that was initially planned for 2021. And he's planning a 1.5% COLA for 2122. So that 3.84% is basically the compounded COLA because it reflects the increase of 2.31% as of last year in addition to the 1.5% for next year. And what we typically do is, and you know, we typically, when we prepare the budget and the interim reports, we typically make sure that we abide by county guidelines and so forth. And the county typically is fairly conservative, and they would, it's likely that they'll probably stick with the School Services projection for COLA as well this coming year. So that'll be likely what we'll use. You see that the the differences are really in the out-years, which would affect our multi-year projection. And the School Services projections are slightly lower than what the Department of Finance has. Special education. So so with special education, I don't know if you guys recall, but last year, we received a nice increase. You know, the one area that the governor is definitely focused on. So because the base funding for our AB 602 was actually for special ed, was increased last year, I think it was approximately 12%. So we're currently at a a base of $625 per ADA for AB 602, which is our special education funding. We are, he's only proposing an increase for the 1.5% COLA for next year because essentially, we received an increase this year for special education. In addition to that, one other thing he's planning on doing is continuing his funding for early intervention. So last year, he had proposed $300 million for one-time money to go to going towards supporting preschool kids with disabilities. He is planning to actually continue with that funding, but he's gonna convert that 300 million in 2122 to ongoing funds. And what School Services is projecting is that essentially amounts to about $5,900 per preschool student with disabilities. This is a look at some of the categorical programs in the budget. And the big one here for us at a USD is the mental health programs. The the nice thing is, of the $450 million that is planned for these programs, it's actually gonna be funded by federal non-Prop 98 funds, which is great because that doesn't dip into the existing funds for Prop 98. Educated professional development. So he is committing $540 million for one-time funding for professional development. And of that 540, 315 million will go towards the first two, professional learning and teacher effectiveness. And 225 million will go towards the teacher pipeline, which is to primarily support the teacher residency program and classified employee credentialing programs. So what's not in the budget? So there's no liability coverage for COVID-19 for school districts. We also will not have, unlike the hold harmless for ADA, there is no hold harmless for our unduplicated pupil percentage. So again, under unduplicated pupils are our low-income or free and reduced meal kids, foster and EL youth. And there's no additional buy-down for CalSTRS and CalPERS. If you guys may recall, in the 1920 budget, the governor had set aside some funds to basically, it was about $3 billion to buy down these rates for for our pension plans. And I have a few slides later that where I'll touch on this, but we're continuing to to see the benefits of those buy-downs from prior years, but there is no additional funding that he's putting towards that in 2122. This is just a look at the other areas of the budget and where, what else he'll be funding. You can see that the lion's share here is gonna go towards pandemic relief, economic recovery. And one other thing that I think is 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 worth highlighting is $1 billion going towards forest health and prevention strategy because I just feel like, you know, every year we hear about these fires getting worse and worse. This is a look at the, what we've been loosely referring to as the CARES Act funds. So these are all the different funding sources from the federal and state programs where we've received funding. And across all these, all these resources, it's been about $7 billion for school districts. And of these funds, for us at a USD, this amounted to approximately $5.3 million. So this was, these were funds that were part of the first stimulus package. Nutrition services. So this is just highlighting the fact that they are providing additional funds to help increase the meal reimbursement rates. So we're getting 75 cents additional per meal, and this was for the period of March through August of 2020. And we, excuse me, for us, this amounted to about $45,000 during those, during those months. This is a slide, and what it's getting at here is the recent stimulus package that was passed by Congress in late December. And within this package, it earmarks $82 billion for education. The School Services of California has looked into essentially what this means for us in California and for each district. And I believe the allocation method was gonna be very similar to how our Title I funds were allocated. And based on that, we, they're projecting that for us at a, at a USD, it would be approximately $3.3 million one-time funds. So just jumping back to the pension plan rates, I just wanted to mention, so for for PERS, our classified employees, the the projected employer contribution rate is 23% for next year. Had the governor not bought down the rate during the 1920 budget year, it would have been at 24.9%. So essentially, it's very close to a 2% decrease tied to that buy-down. And for us, that represents approximately $300,000 in savings next year. For STIRS, they're projecting STIRS to be at 15.92%, so a decrease from where we're currently at at 16.15. Had the buy-down not occur in 1920, we would have been at 18.1% rather than the 15.92. And because our STIRS population is larger, that actually amounts to $1.2 million less than we than we would have incurred had the buy-down not not happened. This is a look at statewide average reserves. So this is as of the end of 2018, 19, Unified School Districts were at 17.26%. For us, during that time, we were actually at 20.2%. So we were about three percentage points higher than the state average at the end of 1819. The the governor had had The, the governor had, had proposed to set aside $4.6 billion in one-time funds for expanded learning time and academic intervention. When, you know, there was some of the, what they have here in the slide is some speculation as to what these, where these funds would go to and what it would be spent on. And since, since this presentation was shared, the Department of Finance actually last week released some draft language. And basically what they shared in that draft language was that the $4.6 billion in one-time funds would essentially go to, you know, it was still fairly broad in terms of what it would be used on. It was still considered expanded learning time and academic intervention. However, they did provide some details in regards to how these funds would be allocated. And they mentioned that they would initially have, it was essentially $1,000 for each homeless student. And after each homeless student, after that first tier of funding occurred, the remaining balance would actually be allocated proportionately to each school district based off of our LCFF. And so School Services provided a preliminary calculator for us to estimate how much we would receive. And for us, it would be approximately $5.9 million in one-time funds through this expanded learning time fund. And this is just a look at, they mentioned that in this short, I guess, new session at the state legislature, there's already been 500 bills that have been introduced. And across those 500 bills, these are kind of the themes that were, that were showing up. Police reform, COVID-19 mitigation, homelessness and housing, COVID-19 in schools reopening, testing and liability, early childhood education and broadband access. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have. I know that was a lot of information.
You know, and maybe while you're all collecting your thoughts and pondering, I'll just add a few more points. You know, we're, we're expecting to receive, I mean statewide, education is expecting to receive a significantly higher amount of funding next year. But one thing I want to mention about that is most of that money is coming into education. Most of it's coming in on a one-time basis. Also, some of the funds are coming in, you know, in, in the form of what I call restricted programs. Example of that being the Safe Schools for All. It's not being allocated to every school district on a per pupil basis. You have to apply for it. You have to meet certain criteria. You have to engage in certain behaviors. And so if you, if you look at all this new money, only about 15% of it that's coming in is on an ongoing basis. And that's that supplemental cost of living adjustment, the 3.8%. So it's a lot of money that, that we're seeing on the table. I wish more of it were coming in on an ongoing basis to fund the base of LCFF because that benefits all of us, Arcadia included. Another point I want to highlight, David had a slide earlier that showed the state budget for this year or the coming year and then the following year. And he mentioned there's a deficit projected in that following year. And it's actually a couple of years out that they are projecting these deficits at the state level. And that's actually something they cannot have in their budget. So if those deficits remain, they will have to, it's, there it is in the, I think in the 2122. They'll have to find ways to balance the budget. And so that, you know, that, that's not something they're addressing yet, but it's definitely a concern. Another concern, if we look out into the 22, 23 school year is what some people are calling the ADA cliff, the average daily attendance cliff. And because we're, you know, held harmless last year and this year in our funded ADA, which is, which is a great thing. But that ends starting in 22, 23. And so we'll be funded on, if we're declining enrollment, we're funded on the, the prior year. But that's actually going back to 1920. And so there's this gap of this two-year gap where we would experience that drop in funding in 22, 23. So we have time to think about that and plan for that. But it's definitely something that's on the horizon that, that can, that concerns me and probably David as well. And that said, you know, one of the things that has helped Arcadia get through all this volatility in the last 12 months is, are the reserves that we have. You know, it allowed us to make calm and smart decisions last year as we were getting into the, the May and June time, when, when the budget looked so bleak at the state level. We had reserves that allowed us to, to put together a budget and a multi-year projection that allowed us to meet those minimum reserve requirements without slashing our programs or looking at making changes to our staffing levels. And so it's just a real powerful example of how helpful those reserves are that we have as a district. Stop there and let you guys pose any questions you have.
No questions from anybody?
I have so many notes, but I'm up to think about. But I did just want to say thank you for highlighting our reserves in, in terms of like what the average reserves are. Because I think, you know, Arcadia has that reputation that we try to be prudent and thoughtful about keeping that safety net. And so it's, it's nice to see that highlighted against the average.
Yeah. And, and Lee, you know, the funny thing is, I think every year they do share that slide. And I think since I've been here for the last two and a half years, I want to say that I always, of course, check and see where we stand. And we have always been a few percentage points above the state average. So that, that trend has kind of been consistent.
And you know, our practice in the last few years, beginning in January and going through this budget development cycle is to come back frequently to the board, you know, with little bite-sized digestible pieces of, of budget updates. I think David will actually be back at the next board meeting to share the budget development calendar along with the LCAP development calendar. So as your thoughts percolate within your brains, you will, you will have many more opportunities to, to ask questions of David and myself. And of course, any, you know, any questions in the meantime, you're welcome to email to us directly or through, through the superintendent, of course.
Yes, it's all relatively good news, but I, you know, remain concerned that they have not increased the base. And they're treating the base as the maximum amount, the ceiling. And with the pupil count decreasing across the state, it's going to be very hard for school districts. We're going to see lots of problems.
Yeah. And, you know, mentioning the Prop 98, the, the LCFF funding sort of becomes the, the maximum. You know, a year ago, the governor in the final adopted budget, he proposed these, these supplemental payments in the out years, adding like a couple percent to the LCFF funding to bring it up to 40% of state general fund revenues. This was a way to sort of restore us, you know, assuming times would get better in the out years. He was going to make these supplemental payments. In this budget, he is proposing to actually repeal all of those supplemental payments in the out year. And his, his trade-off is a one-time $2.3 billion augmentation to the current year budget. That's partially how he's funding this supplemental or the, the compounded COLA, I should say. And so again, one-time dollars versus ongoing payment to the base. You know, the, the, I, I mentioned that Newsom's budget development cycle is a little more variable compared to Jerry Brown's. And I think there's hopefully some opportunity here for him to make some improvements to some of his proposals. I think he's fairly open to, to feedback from education and, and the groups that represent us up in Sacramento. I know that we've talked internally about this, the recall effort that seems to be gaining steam and, and looks like it might actually be a concern of his. And, and, and maybe with that pressure, you know, he might be more willing to, to make some revisions based on input from the education community that might make this budget look even more appealing. You know, by the time we get to the May revision.
I had a quick question about, just because of the COVID-19. And obviously everyone talks about the learning loss. I know that he, you know, you have a slide on there where he is putting that 4.6 billion for low-income English learners foster homeless youth. Do you know if anyone in Sacramento is also talking about the learning loss for all students due to this? Because I think that that is going to be a huge concern for all districts. It's not, I mean, and of course those students that have, that he's targeting, of course, they, you know, they're also having those, but I feel like it's all students as well. And I'm just wondering if anyone's talking about that or is that something being slept under the rug at this point?
You know, I mean, David has brought us back to that slide and I, and thank you for that. And, and I see that it highlights those students, but honestly, surely when I, when, when I've had conversations about this money with other CBOs, we have been talking about it on a district-wide basis. And so, you know, as, as the slide shows, there's, there's few details about how this money is, is to be allocated and used. And, and so I, I don't feel like it's just for those students. It's not like the LCFF supplemental and concentration that is exclusively for those students.
Okay.
It, it may be provided to us, you know, partially based on those, those pupil counts. But the, the conversations that I've heard either both in School Services and also in capital advisors is that this money is going to be, you know, sort of pretty broad scope, how we can spend it. You know, targeted intervention, I, I think that, that, that would apply to all of our students. And I, I think the, the preliminary conversations that we've had internally on the executive team is, is really thinking about these funds on a district-wide level. Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's good to hear because I, I worry about that next year.
Yeah, absolutely. Keep our eyes and ears open for, for any more details about that population and these funds.
Great. Thank you. And also thank you for cutting this all down, Dave, because, I mean, even with just these few slides out of the 100 it takes a lot, a lot of processing. So I think we're all kind of just sitting here thinking, okay, let me just try to process this through my brain. So thank you for, for cutting it down for us.
Of course. And like Derek mentioned, you know, of course, if you guys have questions, you know, after you've had a chance to kind of digest this information, feel free to reach out.
But, but you know, just to, so I'm going to try and take David's 30 slides and put them into like two sentences. We're getting a, a good COLA, 3.84% that the COLA is good. And there's a lot of one-time money. It's one time, but there's a lot of one-time money that's being proposed. It's not yet approved, but proposed. And that's also a good thing, you know, we're, we're happy to, to find ways to, to support our students and our staff as we return from this COVID time apart.
Yeah. And I would just add to that, I think the funny thing is, looking at, looking back at where we were a few months ago, I think, you know, kind of helps to put things into perspective because I was like super excited when we were going through the workshop and hearing about the COLA and the additional one-time funds, just compared to where we thought we were going to be a few months ago. I think this is a, this is a great step.
Thank you ever so much. Appreciate that presentation.
Thank you.
And you're right, it was one of the highlights of this evening. We are now to comments of the board members. And as usual, we'll start with the person who did the inspiration. So Mrs. Chavez, would you like to start?
Sure. Thanks, Madam President. I will try to be brief. Just congratulations to LEE and it's, I love when students bring their work and how they're giving back and highlight it for us. So that was a wonderful way to start this meeting. I just want to highlight the money aspect of tonight. Derek, I love the way you framed the audit report as a way of keeping our financial practices going well. And so many people think of audits in, in negative ways and they're not. And so I loved that. Great to hear that we didn't have findings. It's always nice to get that, those clear reports. And David, thank you for your report. It's so comprehensive and so much information. But I do think it really helps the way that it's put with the funnel down from the large and the macro perspective into how, what it really matters for us. And there's a lot to process with all the one-time, but thank, I hope that COLA stays. What an incredible presentation from Dana, but I feel like we had a chance to speak to it. I'm just going to say, when we go on our in-person boardwalks, you have time to let your thoughts kind of simmer and you can put some really good comments together. And having to respond immediately, I always feel like we're missing something. And so I, I just want to say we're doing the best we can, but it is on the fly. And so I'm sure like we all will think of wonderful things to add that we didn't even get a chance to say tonight. But it was really great to see how much of their community came together to present about their community because it, it just speaks to it. So that was great. And Derek, I appreciate it in your report, the way you highlighted so many folks that work on our team. So it's nice to celebrate those successes. So thank you. And I'm just going to cut it off right there.
Thank you. Okay. It's Mr. Eng.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to repeat everything that, that we had said. You know, thank you to LEE for her presentation. It's a big deal, COLA award. Again, thank you to Dana, who's doing some really good things and I'm sure happening throughout the entire district. Thank you again to David for his presentation of the governor's proposed state budget. It's a lot of information. Great to hear that in a broad sense, it's positive news for us. So that's good. Other than that, I did attend the athletic boosters meeting recently. Again, very well attended, over 35 people. They're still anxious and really dying to get out there and coach and get the student athletes out there. So you're being hopeful also. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Connor, are you interested in adding anything?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. I guess one thing about the budget presentation is just comparing it to the ones, the budget presentations we had like, honestly, like a few months ago, no, maybe not a few months ago, but like half a year ago. It's really nice to see how things are like shaping up. Because it was definitely a little bit concerning back then, but I'm happy to see that things are turning up. And then as for the Dana presentation, I agree with Ms. Chavez. It's really hard to take it all in at once and develop comments on it. But one thing that I was not expecting was for it to be so emotional, especially at the part where one of the moms of the goal program was like choking up. Like it's really difficult for me to see like other people so emotional. So definitely I was holding back some tears, but it was really nice to see that sort of like genuine appreciation of the efforts of the staff by, you know, members of the community. And I think it really attests to Dana's success so far. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. On Mrs. Y.
Thank you, Madam President. Just gosh, everything that everyone else said already in terms of Dana's presentation. As we said, it's just, it's hard to be able to put it all in a concise, you know, way. And also it's funny because, you know, you make your comments and then you hear all the other board members. You're like, oh yeah, that's, you know, that's exactly why, I forgot about that. So it's nice actually that we all are able to kind of put our piece, you know, our comments.
together because I think as a group, we kind of encompass everything. In a way, we kind of touch upon all these little things. So, but thank you again to Dana and and just the one thing I forgot to, I just wanted to give a shout out to the students. I really loved just hearing from them and it's always great to just hear how much they love their school and how much they appreciate the teachers and the staff and their peers. So thank you to the students as well. And gosh, thank you to Mr. Eslen, Mr. Vong. As always, very comprehensive in your reporting and always really well-thought-out and really helpful for us, especially being a new board member. Just trying to figure out all the different components of the budget has been definitely a task. But I keep on learning every time I hear your reports and your presentations. So thank you. And I know that your business services team has a lot to do with a lot of the presentations you do. So thank you to them as well. And so let's see, I, since the last meeting, I've attended, continue to attend the various PTA meetings for the different units. And I recently attended Holly Avenue PTAs meeting. Just fun for me because that's one of the schools that I was PTA president at. But I did want to give a shout out to their new PTA president, Helena Cooper, who had to take over because her previous president moved. So coming in midterm, I think, is always a difficult task. And she did a wonderful job at the meeting, her first meeting as president. And I just wanted to give a shout out to her. And also just the PTA in general, as all the other PTAs, they're doing a wonderful job engaging their families, supporting the school. And I just can't say enough about how grateful we are for all the parents and the families that are part of the PTAs. Also attended the Arcadia Council PTA meeting. And I think the units are still working really hard to increase our membership. It's such a difficult time doing membership online, virtually. I know there's disappointment, but they've done such a wonderful job in trying to get those membership numbers up. And I just wanted to commend all the membership chairs for all their work in that. And then just a little side note that the council did extend invitations to all the board members to attend the virtual CAPTA legislation conference, which Kay and I and Kung as well had attended last year, which was wonderful in person. But I will be attending and I've already registered, it's February 8th through 9th. And it's fairly long, I think it's like two to eight on those two days. But it'll be interesting to see how they do that legislative conference. Because it's such a, and it's really something that you really want to go in person. So it'll be interesting for, for me to, to attend and see kind of how they go about doing that and reaching out to legislators virtually. Besides that, thank you to all the other administrators for their reports as always, and hopefully everyone has a good night.
Mr. Chum.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Ms. LEE, of course, for the great presentation. I think I'm going to make the lemon hummus this weekend. It sounds great. That was awesome. Really looking forward to the Better Together Conference coming up on February 23rd. Thank you to Mr. Gazanian for that. I'm big data geek, so I'm really looking forward to data about data. I know you're working on building a website for that, so really looking forward to that as well. Dr. Vernazdol, you don't get enough kudos during these talks sometimes, so I'm going to give some to you. I really enjoyed the videos you sent out in the last communications from Ryan, especially, you know, you are our leader for the district. And you really demonstrated your leading through empathy. And I think, you know, of course, we've talked about it for months and months, but that is so much needed right now. And I thought it were perfect videos for the moment. And I hope, and I'm sure all our families and the staff appreciated those comments. Mr. Eslen, Mr. Vong, I'm not sure what has more changes, the health orders or the state budget projections. So thank you for keeping on that, all the changes, all the time. Just like, you know, kind of the hopeful news on vaccinations, it's the budgets is seeming to be more hopeful too. And I think that's kind of how I want to leave it tonight and just full of hope. And as well for Mr. Bramley, best of luck to you on Friday. Godspeed, sir.
I thought I would go ahead and go next, just to mix it up and have David finish it off. I echo all those thank yous to everyone. So I won't belabor that one. And I loved on the Dana, I loved having not only the students, but the parent input from different aspects. That was great. I wanted to wish Rachel happy belated birthday. We hope you had a good celebration. I'm very happy your birthday didn't land on tonight for you. Shirley Yee had sent me a question, I never quite got back to her, on how do we select who goes to the Ledge Conference? And normally it is exactly the PTA person normally goes ahead and goes to the PTA Ledge Conference. And of course, the district sends an entire team from all the different schools, we aim for parents from every school plus at least one or two principals and often somebody from the superintendent's team. I know Brent went last year, Dr. Forsy went last year with us. And it's not unusual, normally it's one board member, but there have been a number of occasions where a second board member goes. And that is, we don't typically put more than two out there, but up to two often go to the Ledge Conference. So if anybody else is interested in attending with Shirley, we can certainly work on that. So.
Kay, can I just, because it's a virtual conference, it's only $50 and so council will pay for, because they have a budget for it. So because of the special virtual conference and it's not in Sacramento with all the other travel costs, anyone can attend. So it's a great time to do it if you'd like to, just let me know and I can, you know.
I have a quick question. Sorry, you know, usually we have, that's our opportunity to meet with our representatives and sort of lobby on behalf of AUSD. And usually we have an agenda or talking points that our district compiles. I don't know if that's going to be an aspect of this year's conference. But anyway, just something to think about as we move forward.
Yeah, and I can ask the VP of Ledge, which is Jennifer Ledesma this year. And like Kay said, I mean, I was VP of Legislation in the PTA last year when I attended. So that's why I asked Kay, I had no idea how the board members, so thank you, Kay. But yes, let me know if anyone wants to join and I will let Jennifer know.
And we often talk during a board meeting or after a board meeting, who wants to go and figure it out? So I figured I'd put it in my comments to have that open discussion. I don't know if students are coming from the high school this year. But often students, you know, are invited to attend and normally I think they apply to attend.
Yes, they're still applying and they will be selecting students to attend a virtual conference as well. So it's all the same except that because it's virtual, they're opening it up to anybody who wants to come.
Excellent. So I wanted to make sure we covered that. And there's no rocket science to it. And it depends on who has the time to be able to go. And there's also typically a legislation day that CSBA puts on. And it's typically, I think, in March, so it's a month or two later. So we will have that opportunity as well. I don't know if CSBA is pulling something off with that virtually this year or not. Okay, and with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll begin with thanking and celebrating our successful audit tonight. There's research that shows a direct correlation between sound financial practices and the amount of sleep a superintendent gets. It's, it's direct correlation. So I deeply appreciate their work and their entire team and the due diligence that they take with, with our, you know, with our taxpayers' money. And so thank you for that. LEE, I loved kicking off our meeting tonight with her work and especially again, just her willingness to share that. That's, that's just always builds a lot of pride in us when our students give back to the younger students. So thank you so much. Ms. Chavez, you mentioned the negative connotation with an audit sometimes. So you can really imagine when I'm out with my colleagues, trying to convince them that they should be doing a culture audit like, like we're doing. And I don't like the financial audit, why would I choose to do a culture audit? I share that because I had a wonderful opportunity to represent all of us in our organization at a international research conference with Alan Daley, co-presenting on our work together with our Better Together data. Unfortunately, we were supposed to be in Auckland, New Zealand presenting. And of course, instead I was in my spare bedroom, not quite the same. But it was well-attended. We got a lot of wonderful feedback and people already, you know, hitting me up on email, et cetera. Very curious about our journey and our work. Hyper-focused on trust and relationships as a foundation for a healthy organization. And so it's just neat to see that that works, you know, there's pockets of that work going on around the world. And, and that interest in what we're doing. So thank you. I always say it's, it's a blessing to get to go out and share the work that we do collectively. I want to thank Dana, just the entire staff and, you know, Daniel. You know, for me, and thank you Connor for saying it, I, you know, I got to feel the emotions that we would normally get if we're there on the ground, kind of standing in some of those classrooms and talking to teachers. And, you know, we're all doing something different and reimagining how that looks. But for them to be able to put something together that gives us a chance to not just hear with our mind, but, but also our heart of the work that's going on is just incredible. So thank you to that. And the budget, Dave, thank you as always for putting together that presentation. I'll just kind of leave you with, you know, what scares me a little as, as we move forward. I'd like a positive budget. But when you see that line that's trending up with the stock market, that's not really reflecting the reality right now of what's going on on the ground and knowing that we depend on the top 1% of income earners in the state, the wealthy to provide us our revenue. And as the stock market goes, we go. And so I'm hopeful, as everyone else is, but kind of as Derek, it's, you're hopeful, but yet a little reserved, knowing that that time's always right around the corner. So, but I always appreciate it. You guys do a fabulous job of balancing that for us and keeping it sound. So thank you for that and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you so much. And with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 9:44 PM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.